All right. Good evening, everyone. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty-five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. All right, Mr. Stenbridge.
And before we begin, I will ask if there is.
Sorry, taking real call first.
I just want to jump ahead.
Sure do.
Present, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Better Brazza.
Present, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Floor is now yours.
Thank you. Before we begin this evening, we'll ask if there are any withdrawals or deferrals that would be requested from this evening's hearing? Hearing none, we will move forward. First, we have case BOA one four five, one four zero four, with the address of forty-six Crosstown Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
I just want to say that.
I'm sorry. Is the applicant present?
Hi, I'm the contractor representing forty-six Crosstown.
Excellent. Are you doing the presentation?
Yes, I am.
Can you identify yourself and put your address into the record?
Yes, my name is Owen Murray. I'm the contractor for forty-six Crosstown Ave.
Great. Please let us know what you're requesting.
Well, currently, the house is a two-bedroom ranch, and they want to raise it up another level to create a colonial. Essentially, we had two and a half-story home. It's currently just two bedrooms. They want to make it into four bedrooms. The attic won't have any use except for storage. And right now, just the refusal is for the inefficient, insufficient, insufficient, excuse me, side yard. There's plenty of backyard space and all that, but other than that, there's nothing too crazy in this house here.
Thank you. Any questions on the plans?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes.
Sorry, hearing none? There you go, Connor. We'll go to public testimony.
My apologies, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office conducting the Butters meeting where neighbors were vocally in support of this proposal. The applicant then went on to meet with the West Roxboro Neighborhood Council, which supported the proposal unanimously. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Joe, do you have a? You looking to give testimony here? Hearing no other testimony. I have no additional. Oh, you looking to give testimony for this proposal?
No, not this proposal. I'm sorry. I was late on the.
The deferral, so you're looking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, I have two things on the agenda that I want to get deferred. I thought.
Well, let's finish the vote here first, Mr. Bono. Thank you. Okay, so with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Great. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, so we'll let Mr. Bono see his deferrals. If he's ready.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we're on for one zero nine Salem Street and one eleven Salem Street.
Okay, the last two cases.
We wanted to defer the, those two hearings because we still have to get community input.
Just need to read the BOA into the record.
So those would be. So those two cases would be case B. First would be case BOA one three four zero one nine eight, with the address of one oh nine to one oh nine A Salem Street. And okay, along with that would be case BOA one three four zero two zero four, with the address of one eleven to one eleven A Salem Street. Right now, we have. Right now, the next available date would be June fifteenth. If that is suitable, if you think you'll have the meeting and done what you need to do by that point.
Okay, and what's the next meeting date after that?
The next, the next date would be July twentieth.
All right, let's come here. You put us off for June fifteenth?
June fifteenth.
So with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of deferral.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, have a good weekend.
Okay, next, we will move on to case BOA one three five zero four zero seven, the address being forty-four R Worley Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Can you raise your hand if you're in the attendee section and you're here for that hearing?
Any raised hands, Jessica?
No.
Okay, we can keep moving and circle back.
Okay. Next, we have case BOA eight eight one zero six eight, with the address being six seventy-six to six eighty Truman Parkway. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
Yes.
Hi, can you identify yourself and your name for the record, address for the record?
I just promoted him to a panelist, Madam Chair, so he might just go right back in.
Sounds good.
Donald, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Yep, that's fine. Can you identify yourself and your address for the record and then just proceed?
My home address or business.
Whatever address you want to give us.
All right, well, I am Donald Orman. My home address is twenty-two Schlagar Ave, Quincy, Massachusetts, two one six nine.
And what's your request?
We are looking to transfer the license from the previous operator at six eighty Truman Parkway to our name.
And is the use going to be the same?
It is.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No question.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing none, may I have public testimony if there is any?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a Butters meeting was held on March twenty-second for this proposal, and the applicants did reach out to the West Fairmont Hill Community Group, and our office has received no opposition or concerns regarding this proposal. So at this time, we wish to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm trying to have no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve the applicant to remove the proviso of this petition only.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four three two eight six eight, with the address of two forty-two Fairmont Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
My name is Hannah Pham. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm the owner of two forty-two Fairmount Ave. I'm here to ask for a change of occupancy into a two-family. No construction is proposed. May I continue speaking with the relief?
Yes, please proceed.
So I want to ask the board to relieve the violation of waiving the land violation. As you can see, our land is over seven thousand, thousand square feet of land, so we have a lot of green space. So I want to ask a relief for the land violation. The second violation I want to ask for to waive is two-family and one-family zone. On the street, there's multiple existing multifamily already. So I just want to ask the board to waive that to make us become two-family also. The last violation is a violation of parking. And it's parking in front yard. Can I please ask to share my screen with the actual picture of the car with the parking?
We can't share screens.
Oh, okay.
But the main, I think the photograph or the image is here that we need. So if you want to speak to that.
Okay, so so the parking, it's already there. So we just want to make it so that we can park into parking number three. There is already existing curb cut, so we don't need to request any additional curb cut. And we have plenty of space to go in and out between the two cars, parking number two and parking number three. So since this is already exists, there's no detrimental to the neighbors. And we actually taking away three parking on the street, especially this, on the street, there's no snow parking when it's a snow ban, we cannot park outside. So making this parking legal will help very benefit to the people that live on the, in the house. And we do have a lot of buffer zone on the left and also like entering. So I'm asking permission to to give us legalize the parking.
Can I ask, so right now, your garage accommodates one spot. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so what I'm hearing is you're already using the driveway in front of the garage for a second car. Is that right?
Yes. So parking one and parking two will be for the first unit, and parking three will be for the two, for the second unit.
And what are you doing to fit that third spot? Because right now I see a driveway. So are you like flattening out your front yard to do that?
It's actually, if you look at the picture, the actual picture that I took a picture of the cars. I it's, I'm sorry, you didn't, there, I submitted with the, I didn't know you didn't have the picture. So the car, the parking number two and parking number three can enter without interference with each other because our drive, the driveway is wide enough to allow us to park, to drive into parking two and parking three without interference.
Other questions from the board?
So in terms of the two units, those are existing units. You have two families in this, in this structure, correct?
Yes, it is.
And so you were cited for violation, correct?
Uh, this house used to, I have an ADU. So I, I, I want to legalize it as a two-family.
Okay, so you have an existing kind of ADU. You have one unit plus an ADU. How come you didn't submit drawings?
The.
I'm sorry, but you do have drawings.
Yes.
So which one is the ADU? You have unit one on the first floor, and then you have unit two on the second floor.
Yes, yes.
Which one's the ADU?
The AU, the U is number one.
The ADU is for the first one?
Yes.
And when was that approved?
That was approved in twenty nineteen.
Okay, so just, just in terms of my colleagues, just so they know, I was looking at the zoning viewer, and you are correct that on a two thirty-seven Fairmount, even though its zone has one F nine thousand, I looked up at the assessors, and that's a four to six family apartment unit. So I just want to let my colleagues know that. Okay, great. I don't have any further questions.
You have questions on the parking?
No, I did see BPDA's recommendation to eliminate those two spaces, space two and three.
Thank you. But Norm, any notes from Bob D'Amico on the?
None. My question would be, so those units, those parking spaces are part of the front yard? Or?
No, it's actually a drive, it's actually a driveway. It's paved. And right now, I'm, I'm sorry, because I, you didn't have the picture, and I, I hope I can share my screen. There, it's, there's no work to be done. The driveway is paved. The curb cut is there, and it's allow us to enter parking two and parking three without needing any additional work.
I think it's a semantic issue. You're calling it a driveway, but from the BTD perspective, that's considered a front yard.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I apologize. We do have something from Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation. And he wrote that two forty-two Fairmount Street needs more detail on how the cars will be parked as well as access and egress to the parking area.
If I can share my screen, I can show you.
You can't share your screen. I'm sorry. That's just not possible. Sorry.
I did, I did mail a letter together with the pictures beforehand. I'm not sure that you didn't have it to show you the actual image of the.
Any thoughts from the board as to how to proceed? Do you want to defer until you see the detail from BTD?
I'm okay with making a motion, but there were some letters of support on file.
Okay.
And there was me, Mr. D'Amico also wrote that in terms of please remove space three. So I think, I'm going to think we need to revisit this somehow from work.
Great. Any, any, any public testimony?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I held in a Butters meeting on February sixteenth. One, a butter that was present at this meeting did have concerns about some debris in the backyard that was building up that they felt could be a hazard or just deemed an eyesore for them. The applicants did reach out to the Fairmount and West Fairmont Hill community groups regarding their proposal, and we've received no letters of opposition or support. So at this time, we wish to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. One other question. There is on-street parking, correct? That is allowed.
May I speak? I'm sorry. There is on-street parking.
So you can park on the street?
Yes, but during the snow ban, we cannot park on the street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion with, motion of approval with a proviso, which is to eliminate parking space number three. And to allow, to allow the occupancy to be a two-family, so it can be so it doesn't have to be cited.
Okay, with that, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we have case BOA one four three six three one seven. The address of thirty-eight Taunton Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, this is Gloria Weeks, and James Goodwin is also on the line from Capital Construction.
Great. Can you share what you're proposing? What relief you need?
I believe he's going to speak. Does he have? Does he have?
Yes.
James, go right ahead.
I'm sorry.
Is he there?
He's coming back as a panelist, but I'm sure.
Okay. Thank you.
James, are you there? You can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So yeah, we're just asking, so we're building a deck on the back of the house. It's twelve by twelve. We're twelve feet, four inches from the, I'm sorry, thirteen feet from the property line of the fence. And we had a Butters meeting, and we didn't have any objections to any of the Butters objecting to what we wanted to propose and do.
Any questions from the board?
No questions, pretty sure.
Yep, any public testimony?
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a Butters meeting was held on March thirteenth, and our office has received no opposition or concerns regarding this proposal. And at this time, we wish to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure I have no raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one four four nine zero five five, address being thirty-four Halsey's Road. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Present.
Great. Can you put your name and address in the record and just briefly share with us what you're proposing?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Fenton Bradley. I'm an architect representing the property owner in this town. Thank you for this opportunity. My business address is two thirty-four West Center Street, Unit fourteen, West Bridgewater. Today, we are here seeking relief for zoning violations that pertains to Article sixty-nine, Section nine of the zoning code. Specifically, we are seeking variances to three aspects: excessive floor elevation, insufficient side yard, insufficient rear yard. The zone in sub-district for this property is one F six thousand. The existing parcel allotted in question measures approximately five thousand two hundred twenty square feet, and the current living space is twelve hundred twenty-four square feet. We are seeking relief for the, first, for the floor area violation. The current zone allows a point five. We are actually seeking a point four. So there is question to this violation. However, we acknowledge that this modification may result in a floor area ratio violation, but we are seeking confirmation on this matter. Additionally, we're seeking relief for insufficient side yard. The current zone requires ten foot. We're proposing six-foot side yard. And finally, on insufficient rear yard, the current requires forty, and we're proposing twenty-four-foot rear yard. Now, let's discuss the project itself. The project involves addition to the back of a residence specifically, and this extension on the kitchen to create a family room on the first level, and there will be a master bedroom on the second level. The intention is to accommodate the needs of the owner's growing third-generation family. I believe it's important to note that the owner has been actively involved in this process for quite some time. They have resided in the house for twenty-nine years. They have a genuine need for expansion. Decision to embark on this project was made at the careful consideration of consultant. In fact, the property owner has proactively reached out to his, to the community groups and neighbors, both direct Butters or express their support for the project. Additionally, the owner prepared a formal flyer and successfully acquired signatures for the plans. Just wanted to emphasize that Fenton Bradley D twenty-one did not draft the drawings for this project. Presentation is based on drawings provided by the owner. As the current architect, I was brought on to assist with the zoning relief aspect. With that, I conclude my presentation. Available to address any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions other than some of the feedback from the letters that we received.
Any, Mr. Stenbridge, any questions?
Not this time, Madam Chair.
All right.
Madam Chair, so I guess I just wanted the applicant to address concerns and issues over a lot of trash that had been noted from the, from the nearby residents, if they can address that.
Yes, yes, I have spoke with the owner and the contractor. They will be working on this project. I've reviewed demolition plans and waste management plans with them. I spoke to the owner again about the, the neighbor complaint, and he believes it was unrelated to this project.
Okay, no further, no further questions. Thank you.
Okay, may I have a public testimony?
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I held in a Butters meeting on June twenty-seventh for this, and in a butter that was present at that meeting, who also sent in a letter of opposition, addressed concerns for potential parking increase, increase in road activity in the neighborhood due to what they stated was improper disposal of garbage at the property. We've received letters, or excuse me, signatures and support that were sent to the board for review as well. The applicants have also been in contact via email with the West Fairmount Community Hill Group. And at this time, we wish to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure I have no raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward. Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval and also will like to make note that the applicant continues to work with its neighbor to address some of their concerns in terms of uh an abundance of trash in front of their property.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mister Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better, Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Uh, Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we have, next, we have case BOA one four five one zero zero five with the address of one Bateman Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes.
Can you state your name and address for the record and uh share with us what you're proposing?
Hi, my, good evening. My name is Stefan Gillens. I'm the owner of one oh nine Bateman Street. Uh, what I'm proposing is as you look at the drawing, it's right now, it's a single-family home. It's one-story, and I'm trying to do it's still gonna stay as a single-family, but I'm trying to do uh two-story with a master bedroom, master bathroom upstairs with two additional bedroom and the second level. But the violation I have on this home is on the left-hand side to my neighbor. It's under ten feet, and the new proposal, I did it, that the new proposal in conform with the ten feet from the left side of my neighbor. So I'm trying my best to do to accommodate for the setback that that I don't have on the existing right now. And the next violation I have is on the front where the front should be twenty-seven feet away from the street. Now, I don't have that, but I'm not doing any extra work on the front. It's just gonna be at the the back. And also, I'm going on, going up one story. So it's gonna be a two-story property.
I'll ask Ms. Better Baraza to to speak more on this, but uh it does look like the mostly sing uh one stories uh in your immediate vicinity. Can you, I don't know, Ms. Better Baraza, you wanna elaborate?
Well, I ha- I haven't had a chance to look at its context, but I can pull it up. I mean, my, my question deals more with um the habitable basement. So in regards to your basement, um, what is the height and um and what is grade on the exterior?
The existing height uh right now is seven feet um four inches, and the new proposal, I'm gonna make it to be eight feet.
Okay.
And the grade, the grade is hmm, I'm not sure about the grade. The grade is
So the grid on the exterior, so for example, right now, you're just showing um, oh, so there's a door to the
Yes.
So from the, from where the bedrooms are,
Right.
from the finished floor of the interior, where is the grade on the exterior? Do you have a sense?
Hmm, it's
But that is a walkout, correct, to
It's gonna be a walkout.
To the grade?
Yes.
On the exterior?
Yes.
So you have two means of egress. One is from the, from that outside and then going up the stairs?
Yes.
Okay, um, and then to answer your question, Madam Chair, yes, most of the, most of the neighborhood is one, one and a half stories. Yep.
Yeah, cuz I wanna, I guess I um maybe it was not clear to me in the uh relief sought, uh, it did, it did not describe a second story. It mentions extending basement living, so I don't know if I missed something on that. Or if that was just ambiguous.
No, I think the um
Like the request itself, I don't, not the, not the
They're not, it it's okay to propose the height because they're not in violation of height, so that means it's, it's allowed.
Okay, got it.
Their relief has to do more with setbacks.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Okay, did I hear that he was uh that he was able to come up with uh ten, ten-foot clearance on the side of the house?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, that's the only question I have.
With that, uh, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Danielle Fonseca, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, the applicants completed the community process on March twenty-ninth, uh, and they notified all the Butters. Um, we've received no letters um of opposition or support at this time for this proposal. So at this time, we'd wish to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with uh BPDA Design Review and that no building code relief be granted.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mister Stenbridge?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four four two four six three with the addri- the address of ten Manor Street is the applicant or their representative present?
Uh, hello, Madam Chair. Uh, my name is Tony Riley. I'm an attorney and I represent the applicant in uh this matter. Uh, my office's address is at ten Enterprise Street uh in Ducksbury, Massachusetts.
If you wanna walk us through your request?
Sure. So um in September of two uh two thousand twenty, um, uh, my client, uh Mister Hanjowski, had to remove a a a pre-existing deck off the back of his property as a result of a failing um retaining wall uh that that a contractor that he hired discovered. Um, and it kinda set off a chain of events where uh the the retaining wall was failing, causing uh the deck to pull away from the house, and then the the deck was also supporting a uh three-season porch um on the, from the backyard on the second floor of the property. Um, so he, he got the retaining wall work done. Um, and then this is the process to finish, you know, fixing his backyard to replace the deck, and the reason why why we're here is that there's a ten-foot setback uh in this district. Um, he initially applied for a building permit, uh, you know, before retaining my services and uh was unaware that he first needed permission from the board um to reconstruct his non-conforming deck. Um, so the building permit was denied. So we appealed uh the building permit denial just to reserve our rights on the issue, and then we also requested um from this hearing process, the permission from the board to build his deck, which um is uh actually going to be less non-conforming than the original deck was. Um, because all this sort of happened a couple of years ago and on a somewhat emergency basis, there's no plans uh that depict the original deck, but I submitted some, you know, aerial photographs and other pictures that show what it used to look like, and there's an aerial photograph that shows that the original deck was basically right up on the property line, probably, you know, from bird's eye view, a foot, foot and a half away. Um, and as you see, the deck here is about seven feet away, and there then there's a bump out close to the side of the property where it provides access to the backyard. Um, as it stands now, uh, the only access to the backyard is either through the front door and around the house, or Mister Hanjowski has to go down through his basement and out the back door because the backyard is down gradient about a story um from the street level. Um, so uh we need a relief from the board to um build this deck as it's designed uh on the plans in front of you. Um, but all he's requesting is to reconstruct an already non-conforming deck that he had uh removed for structural and safety reasons from his house.
Yes. Any questions from the board?
No question.
Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held a Butters meeting where no Butters were in attendance. Uh, the applicant then went on to meet with the Civic Association, which in this area is the Pope's Hill. Um, they had no concerns with the proposal, and our office later received one letter of support. Uh, with that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no
If, if I may, just quickly, um, this, uh, I know the neighborhood is, the Neighborhood Association received one letter of support. We've, we've included um two that were submitted directly to Mister Hanjowski, and importantly, there are the two direct Butters on either side that would be most affected by um this project, so that's also in the board's record.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second? Mister Stenbridge?
Second.
Thank you, Mister Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we, excuse me, next, we have case BOA one four three four 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 three. The address being twenty-six Speedway Street is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes. I'm gonna, it's Erica Davis. I'm gonna have my representative, um, Trevor Blake, speak on my behalf.
Jessica, is he, he or she a panelist?
Um, they should, if they're not, I see
Okay.
Them, Madam Chair.
I am, I am on now.
Okay, great. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Trevor Blake. Um, I'm the contractor for twenty-six Speedway. Um, my clients purchased the property and the basement was a usable space at the time. However, through the um, the permit process, we found out that basement was never done legally. And so we're seeking relief to allow us to use the basement as part of the first-floor unit. Um, we have a FAR violation. I think um it requires um point eight, and we are point nine. And so on that note, we're asking for relief.
And and what's the plan for the basement, family room?
It's um, it's, it's um, it's, we have two bedrooms down there and a bathroom and a laundry facility, um, which would be part of the first floor. We, we have already um put in the egress windows because we thought we would have, we could have. We have a, a short form that we've been working on, and when we realized we needed um to legalize this space, we um, we put in for the, for the long form and um realized we had an FAR issue, and that's why we have come before the board for relief.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. What uh actually, I do, what's the height of the basement?
It's an excess of seven feet.
It's an excess of what?
Seven feet.
So, okay, great. No further questions.
Yes, that meets all the requirements.
Um, what are the means of egress out of the basement and in other?
Well, we have, we have a, a, a means of egress through, we have two windows from, from each, each bedroom, egress windows, and um we also have a um bulkhead area that um we will be opening up to um allow for um a direct means of egress from the, from the basement to the outside other than the bedrooms. Um, the, it is part of the first floor, and so we also have egress through the first floor to the outside. So we have many forms of egresses there.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Uh, background information, the community process, our office held in a Butters meeting, uh, no Butters were in attendance. Uh, the applicant then went on to meet with the Civic Association, which is the Meeting House Hill, uh, where they offered their support uh for this proposal. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mister Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Next, we have case BOA one three four nine seven three six with the address of nine oh six Dorchester Avenue is the applicant or their representative present?
We are. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of six eight six uh, six eight six Architects with a business address of eleven fifty-six Dorchester Ave. Uh, before you tonight is nine oh six Dorchester Ave, uh, the proposal to change occupancy from office to a nail salon. Um, the only violation is the use is conditional in this location. We held in a Butters meeting back in September. Um, there was no opposition. We met with Columbia Savin Hill. The project was well-received. Um, the intent is to have six manicure stations, seven pedicure stations, four drying stations, uh, three waiting seats, and one receptionist. The hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, ten AM to seven PM, with Sunday hours to be determined based on uh need and demand and the relationship with the community. Uh, and the total occupancy load would be thirty-four with the average anticipated at um twenty-five.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Um, what's your height in the basement?
Uh, it'll be, I I don't have the dimensions on here, but it's, it's almost nine feet. It's over, it's addable.
Okay, great. I don't know for, no further question.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, so at this point, it's a, it's currently um a retail space, and it, and it will be refined to for the nail salon.
Yes, correct.
No further question.
Thank you. Uh, with that, may I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, uh, there wasn't a Butters meeting held, and they also connected with the local Civic Association. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time. Uh, with that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mister Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have, excuse me, next, we have case BOA one four four three one three three with the address of thirty-four McBride Street is the applicant and or their representative present?
Uh, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Attorney Justin Burns, uh, business address ten Forbes Road, Braintree, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of the owners of thirty-four McBride Street. Uh, this project is proposal to erect a second-story addition onto an existing single-family home in a three-F five-thousand district in Jamaica Plain. Uh, the addition would include a new primary bedroom, full bathroom, and ex- expanded uh existing bedroom on the second floor. Uh, the proposed addition would total four hundred and nine square feet, bringing the total structure size to uh one thousand nine hundred thirty-seven square feet. We were cited for one violation of the zoning code, that is for a side yard setback. Um, according to the code, uh, structure must be seven feet from the sidewalk line and ten feet from the existing structure on an abutting lot. Our west setback is uh four uh four feet and ten inches and five feet nine inches. This is a pre-existing non-conformity. The house exists at the setback currently. The addition, as proposed, would not affect the setback. It would neither increase it nor decrease it. Um, additionally, the Butter would be most impacted by the setback as a inapproval of the pro- of the project, and I believe he also submitted a uh letter of support. Um, we went through a lengthy community process. We did in the Butters meeting where there was a project was positively received. We also went in front of the JPNC, and the project was approved by them. Uh, this time, I'll pause to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board?
No questions, appreciate for.
Uh, with that, may I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, uh, ONS conducted a full community process. The Butters meeting was held on March sixteenth, uh, where no concerns were raised, and I understand that residents were supportive. Uh, the applicant then went on to meet with the JPNC's uh zoning committee, uh, which voted to approve the proposal. Uh, with that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1431939 with the address of 64 Harvest Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
I am. My name is Diane Bailey. I'm the owner of 64 Harvest Street, apartment three.
Great. Can you share with us what you're proposing?
Sure. I am looking to put a roof deck exclusive to just my unit on the roof. The zoning violation is a side yard, insufficient side yard on both the left and the right that I'm looking for relief. I had in a Butters meeting, no one showed or knowing was present. I met with my local Civic Association and I passed that vote. I also have written letters from the other two condo owners in the building as well as all four of my houses on all four sides of, that they do not oppose, that they are, they are okay with me putting on my roof deck.
How large is this roof deck?
Five hundred and fifty square feet, I believe, currently. The plan you're seeing, yes.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any, any questions other than if it's a private deck for the last unit, then it's preferable to have an internal stair.
I did work very hard with my architects. And I was with you. I vehemently opposed having a spiral staircase, but it was the only option in the end. We could not find any other reasonable way to get up there without me losing living space inside my unit.
Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant, they went through a full community process with ONS. No residents attended our Butters meeting and expressed any concerns or were unaware of any concerns at this time. The applicant also went on to meet with the McCormick Civic Association, which opted to support this proposal. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion with a motion of approval with a proviseal that the roof be accessed through an, through an internal staircase and hatch.
Okay, with that, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Second.
You have to say yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Okay, Chair votes yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1452730 with the address of 509 East First Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, hi.
Yes, can you put your name and address into the record and explain?
Yeah. Joanne Camporres, and I'm currently renting space at 509 East First Street in South Boston. And I'm looking to have a certificate of occupancy change. It is currently listed as commercial and I'd just like to have it converted to beauty.
It looks like there's no internal work.
No, there's no construction. It's just, just small furniture being moved in, shelving units and stools. I'm a licensed esthetician and a brow specialist and makeup artist, so minimal equipment is going in.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS had the proponent flyer abouters and informed the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association about their proposal. We are unaware of any concerns at this time. We'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Oh, I see there is one raised hand here. Laura, are you looking to get testimony here?
Hi, yes, my name is Laura Toldano and I'm here representing Council President Flynn because Anna Calderon couldn't make it tonight. I just want to go in record to say that Council President Flynn is in support of this proposal. Thank you.
If you stand on, make your panelists. I have no additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Great, thank you very much. Have a great night.
You too.
Next, we have case BOA 1442810 with the address of 551 East Fifth Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, the applicant speaking, Rory Klune, currently living around the corner on East Seventh Street. We are looking to renovate 551 East Fifth Street for our growing family, two toddlers and a third on the way in a month. I will pass to our architect, Bond Worthington, who's on to speak to the specifics.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Bond Worthington, architect. Business address of 110A Inman Street, Cambridge, Mass. The scope of work for this project is reframing the roof at a higher elevation, added two dormers. It's a vertical addition in the rear above the existing first floor footprint and a two-story vertical addition to the east. Violations were being cited for Article 68, Section 29. It's a roof, proposed roof reconfiguration. Any reconfiguration to the existing roof requires zoning board of appeal relief as well as maximum height for the roof is being exceeded under that same Section 29. In this case, where any increase to the existing roof requires zoning relief, although we're well under the forty-foot allowable height for the neighborhood. We're also being cited for insufficient side yard setback. To the west, the existing house is 1.1 feet from the property line. We're not proposing to move the house, however, the dormer work and the vertical addition in the rear is, is still in that same footprint and the required distance from the property line is three feet. And we're at 1.1. The final violation we've received is, is insufficient off-street parking. Although we have close, we have about thirty-nine feet in the side yard that we're being cited for tandem parking and overall length. Still able to fit one car, potentially two cars in the space provided. We feel if the project really fits in the neighborhood, there's other examples of projects like this in the neighborhood. They immediately beside the house as well. Fits the streetscape. We're not exceeding height of other buildings around us, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions. Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held in Butters meeting on March 13th. There was one abutter in the rear who expressed some concerns, but many other abutters on the call expressed support for the proposal, citing the opportunity for a family to move into, onto the street as well as referencing the work being done fairly in line with other properties adjacent to it. The applicant also reached out to the local Neighborhood Association for the area and was in communication with them. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
We have, we also have several letters of support.
Yes, my apologies. There's also five letters of support that were forwarded to our office and I believe we forwarded those to the board as well. They should have access to those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Hi, Erica, are you looking to have testimony here?
Yes, my name's Eric DeFeo. I'm at 553 East Fifth Street, so I'm on the east side of this project. And I reviewed the project with owners and my wife and I are in support of the project.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1428631 with the address being 23 Hudson Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair. My name's Jim Chen of JCBT Architect with the address of 585 Washington Street here in Quincy. And I'm representing my tenant here tonight for 23 Hudson Street space. That space is originally part of the upstairs restaurant's kitchen. And now the tenant is doing a tenant fit out for this eleven hundred square feet for a bakery, proposing a bakery with no seedings in the space. And the with no seedings and, and it's for a bakery. Thank you. May I answer any additional questions?
And you said the space is currently, was currently part of another space. It's not, it wasn't occupied, it wasn't used itself as a, some sort of retail?
It was originally a kitchen for the upstairs restaurant.
Any other questions from the board?
I do have a question in terms of, this is now a bakery, correct?
No.
It is a bakery or isn't? You said it was part of a kitchen.
It was part of the kitchen. It's a, it was used as a kitchen for the upstairs. Currently it's vacant.
Right, so what are you proposing?
For a baker, bakery space.
A bakery space, correct. So, and there's sit-downs?
The, the, the drawing shows sit-down, but the updated plan has, will not be any seedings.
But you, you will be selling baked goods?
We'll be, yeah, we'll be selling baked goods, but there'll be no dining seatings.
Okay, so how are you dealing with accessibility issues? Because right now it's not accessible.
Yeah.
And previously, and previously didn't have to have a public, if it was a previous kitchen, you know, that's, those were for the users. But if you're having sell goods, you would ima, I would imagine that you need it to be accessible.
Right, for, for the majority of the space around that area does not, wouldn't have that feasibility of, of having the accessibility to get down to that level. Because it's so close to sidewalk.
Have you done any work to your building that would trigger ADA compliance issues? Because I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of renovation going on on that street, so including your building, I think.
Right.
Any other questions, Ms. Better Brazza or Mr. Stenbridge?
No, no further questions.
So, Madam Chair, so this will be, how will this be accessed? Will this be takeout? Will this be delivery out of the space?
Takeout.
So people will access it by stairs on the ground floor?
So customer will access through that set of stairs at the front, down five steps to get into the space.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Sherry Dong and members of the board. This is Chu from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a Butters meeting was held by our office. And this proponent did go in for the Chantel Neighborhood Council and the Chantel Residents Association. There is no opposition from the neighborhood and they also have a lot of support from the Chantel, from Chantel Main Streets. With that said, we would like to defer judgments to the board.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Laura Toldano from Council President Flynn's office again. And I would like to go on record and support on behalf of Council President Flynn. Also about the previous one, I'm sorry, it went too fast, but for the 551 East Fifth Street, Council President will also like to go on record and support based on the good community process and feedback from the neighbors and the abutters. Thank you.
You.
Jimmy, testimony here?
He's the applicant.
Okay, sorry, your hand is raised. I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviseal that it has no building code reliefs and that it ha, and that it also undergoes an accessibility review.
Who, who does that, just for our reference?
That's just ISD. It's just.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Next, we, next and last, we have
Second to last, the Warley is on.
Ah, that's right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, once again, case BOA 1350407 address of 40, 44 R Warley Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Mr. Spitz present? If you're on, can you raise your hand?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm just not here for this proposal. I'm, I'm here for the rediscussion. That's why I
Richard is on, Madam Chair. He gave us a comment. I have to allow him to talk and promote him to a panelist.
Who are we talking about right? Oh, are we on Warley or are we on?
We jumped back, we jumped back to Warley.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Spitz. Apologies. Okay, 44 R Warley. May you please proceed.
Richard, you've been given panelist access.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, this is just to correct the violation, the garage. What you see there is the existing structure was already built. We did an addition on the garage. It was during COVID. And now we have the violation for the rear setback in the side yard.
Any questions from the board?
I'm not very clear what the proposal is.
So our garage originally was
Because we did get BPDA commenting that there were no adequate drawings for the projects. I just want to try to understand what's being proposed here.
There was an extension on the garage that went back about fourteen feet. It was, it stayed the same width before was about twenty-four feet and now it's thirty-six point eight feet total.
Okay, do we have drawings of the existing and then proposed?
No, it had been done prior, so this is more or less a corrective violation.
Oh, I see. So these are drawings of the existing conditions?
Correct. The existing condition is already includes the, the extension that had been done prior.
And so and so can you remind me what the violations are?
We had a rear yard setback in the side yard.
Okay, so can you just quote what's requiring, what's the violation?
In the rear yard, we're supposed to have thirty feet. We have twenty-three point, yeah. And the side yard, I believe it's, it was either nine or ten feet.
And it's six point two. Okay. Great. Thanks for clarifying that. No further questions.
Okay, any other questions?
We have a comment from Bob D'Amico.
Okay.
God said his property. Well, actually, that, that 44 R Warley Street is okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Initially, some Um, initially, some neighbors had some concerns regarding drainage, but the applicant worked to address those with neighbors at the Butters meeting. Uh, neighbors were vocally supportive throughout the process and it was approved unanimously at the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council. Uh, with that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, I have, uh, do you have a raised hands? Francis, is he looking to give testimony here?
Can you tell her?
No, no, sorry. We just were having trouble getting on mic.
Okay, sorry about that. Yep. I have no additional raised hands. Thank you. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm just gonna put for a motion of approval.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mister Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedbraza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the. For the final case on the rediscussion. Um, that would be case BOA one, four, zero, five, two, nine, one. With the address being nine twenty-four East Fourth Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
Yes, Mister Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Maranti, business address of one sixty-eight Eighth Street, first floor. Uh, joining me today are the owners, Mike and Mary Galli-Hew. Also joining us is Nick Landry, who is the architect. This is a proposal to renovate an existing one-family dwelling by adding shed dormers to both the left and the right-hand side of the structure. While maintaining the original slope, design and height. There will also be a rear addition along with garage parking for one vehicle. And a dedicated paved area in the rear lot for a second vehicle. The project has undergone landmarks review and has been accepted by landmarks. Uh, we are in a multi-family residential sub-district with the lot size of approximately four thousand seven hundred ninety-five square feet. If I can direct you to page thirteen uh, of the plans, this will be the first floor. To the left of the entrance, there will be an outside patio surrounded by new trees. To be less visual from the street within the structure. There will be an open living room, dining room and kitchen. To the rear will be a pantry, mudroom with a half bath. This will also lead into the garage space for parking for one vehicle and storage. Please also note in the rear of the property, the plans indicate they are providing outdoor paved space for another vehicle. This parking scheme triggers two violations. Uh, first violation being access drive width is less than ten feet. This access is a pre-existing passageway by the name of Dean Way, which is a private way. All abutting owners, including this property owner, have deed it rights to use this nine-foot passageway for vehicular traffic. And the same manner as every other owner has, um, they access this. Current passageway to access the rear of their properties for parking as well. Uh, the second violation that we do have that was triggered, uh, maneuvering areas on own lot. As the plans show, we will have to reverse out onto Dean Way to exit the premises safely. I want to point out that Dean Way again is a private way maintained by all property owners who have a deed it right to passage. And other property owners that have this right of passage use this passageway in the same manner as this property owner will do. Uh, if I could direct you to page fourteen, please. This was the second floor layout. There will be a master bedroom, second bedroom and an office. Between the bedrooms, there's a, a small lounge area that will lead into an outdoor porch. Next page, I'm sorry. Yes, nope. Should be page, uh, yeah, right here. This is, is this fourteen? Yep, page fourteen, right here. Third floor is on page fifteen, another bedroom with office and a family room that leads to an outdoor porch area. Uh, the remaining violations that we were cited for is we have a root structure restriction. Uh, we are adding dormers to both the left and the right-hand side as well as the proposed three-story addition in the rear is what triggered it. Uh, we do have an insufficient side yard. The left side of the property is compliant at three feet, but the right side is a one foot. Uh, abutting the private way called Dean Way, which is also pre-existing violation. Uh, we have an extension into the rear yard of a thousand square feet or more as the addition that we're building is approximately thirteen hundred and thirty-four square feet. And the last violation that we were cited for is insufficient rear yard. This property is measuring at eighty-four feet, uh, which is considered under the shallow lot dimension. So we would be required to provide a fifteen-foot setback in the rear yard. Uh, we are just shy of that at fourteen feet, nine inches. Uh, at this point in time, I'm gonna turn it over to the board for any questions.
Madam Chair, you're muted.
I'm so sorry. Any questions from the board?
Um. Do you need two parking spaces?
Well, yes, we, we thought that there was a community benefit of having the two parking space considering that we're not gonna impact the neighborhood by removing. Any sort of parking from on-street. Uh, so you know, there, there is a husband and a wife. Um, so again, that we would free up as far as a community benefit and again, using the uh, deed it right passage that we do have. Uh, to allow for the parking in the rear.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Um, we do have a comment from uh, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation.
Please.
He, going back to early March, um, he says, I can't improve nine twenty-four East Fourth Street. The turns are too tight and present a problem when backing up. This also presents a problem for passing pedestrians.
Mister Secretary, uh, are those comments based upon the first original set of plans?
Uh. Not be- not being familiar with the dates involved, this was dated March eighth of this year.
Mar- March eighth, okay. So I, my assumption is that perhaps may have been his comments related to the first. Set of plans where they were showing uh, some tandem spots that were actually pulling in. And again, we, we've removed uh, some of those locations due to the deferral and working together with the neighbors. Um, and it cleared up, uh, you know, some potential issues with the neighbors of the tandem spaces as well, and then we allow for one in the rear. So. I'm not, I, I think maybe more or less his, his direct, um, his comments could be directed as far as the maneuverability. But again, just wanted to remind the board that maneuverability is onto a private way.
Okay, well, w- we can't interpret which scenario, uh, which plans he was commenting on at this point. Um. But appreciate hearing them uh, and understand that there was, there's a nuance. Um, any additional questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted two Butters meetings for nine twenty-four East Fourth Street, one on November twenty-eighth, tw- uh, twenty twenty-two. And one on May tenth, twenty twenty-three, both at around a dozen of Butters. Between the two meetings, the proponent made changes to the proposed building based on community feedback and feedback, ma- excuse me. Feedback from the Landmarks Commission. The proponent answered all questions and responded to concerns about pest management and shared responsibility for the private way behind the property. Concerns were raised about vehicle maneuverability in the private way. ONS has received one letter of opposition and three letters of support from a Butters. The proponent has been in contact with the City Point Neighborhood Association. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you very much.
Hi, hi, this is Laura Tole Donna from Coastal President's Office again. I would like to go on record and support. Um, based on feedback and support letters received from the neighbors and A Butters. Moreover, there were compromises on both sides during the community process regarding the portions, closet space. And our outdoor fireplace, to name a few. Coastal President Flynn respectfully requests that the proponent continues to work closely with the neighbors on any quality of life issues that may arise during the construction phase. Thank you.
You. Any other raised hands?
Yeah, Kevin, you looking to give testimony here?
Yes, I was. Uh, my name is Kevin Joyce. I'm an attorney with Dougherty Law Offices at fifty Franklin Street in Boston. I'm representing the property owners and Butters at nine eighteen to nine twenty East Fourth Street, you know, for Dean Way. The problem of our position is that the parking configuration is presently presented. Uh, not being contained to the lot as is required by the zoning code, uh, has the potential for causing significant public safety issues. On Dean, Dean Way, which is, which is a very narrow private way. Um, parking is not a requirement. Uh, of a um, renovation of a one-family building, which this is supposed to be. Uh, there's never been parking on uh, this particular site. It is on the uh, Mass Housing Historic Commission list. Um, and that the um, configuration just doesn't work. I- i- it just doesn't fit the neighborhood. And it just doesn't fit the confines of um. Of Dean's Way, especially when there's no parking requirement. It seems to me that we're exasperating. Um, a, a, a narrow and unfortunate situation. And it's gonna really cause a significant safety hazard if, if, if we allow it in its present configuration as it's presently proposed. That's, that's the nature of our opposition. You know, straight up, it, it's just gonna cause a pa- public safety hazard. The code respect, maneuverability to the lot to protect public safety. And uh, potential for damage to property and uh, personal injury. There is ample uh, on-street parking on East Fourth Street. And uh, again, it's, there's no requirement for the parking and the way it's presently configured. I- i- we believe it's a safety hazard and will severely impact. The ability of people to come and go on Dean Way uh, without any um, threat of um, interference.
Thank you, Mister Joyce.
Madam Chair, may I respond?
I just want to know if there are other raised hands and then we can turn circle back.
Oh, there, there was just a raised hand that came up. Do you want me to take it or um?
Yeah, let's just take, finish the public testimony and then we'll, we'll, we'll. Have Mister Spitz and Ms. Bedbraza.
Yep, um, Luann, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Luann O'Connor, President, City Point Neighborhood Association. Um, I just want to go on record that. The issue with this property uh, right now seems to be the parking. The proponent has worked through several of the neighborhood issues. Regarding height density decking uh, and the rear yard addition. So with that, uh, the proponent did not come before the City Point Neighborhood Association. And um, we just want to go on record now saying that we will take no opposite, I mean, no position.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Bedbraza, did you have a?
Yeah, yes, and ju- and just the response, I just want. For the record that the, the, the registered D requiring. Um, motor vehicles in that passageway that's ten feet, i- is it currently active?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. So it's already kind of an ex-. An existing condition. And then um, Madam Chair, just I had a chance to review the two parking. Layout structures, the, the two parking proposals, the previous and the current one. And the maneuverability has improved um, from the previous one, so. Um, and then also the BPDA comment seems like it's referring to the older set, but there has been. Um, significant preservations of the existing facade, which I like, which is um, which is a good improvement.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Spitz, do you wanna follow up?
Yes, that's exact, um, there was a point that I wanted to make too, that was, that was just brought up is that currently there is active traffic. There's approximately about. Five neighbors who have this deed of passageway that currently are using it for their vehicles as well. Uh, so my client will not be using it in any different manner than what they are deeded for, just like the other neighbors.
Okay, so to clarify, when you say they're using it, they also have parking spaces on their property?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso of BPDA design review. And a second proviso to make sure that the, the second parking space that's outside. Is, has permeable uh, materials.
Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Mister Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bedbraza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Great, thank you.
All right, with that, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good night.
Have a good night, both.